Carroll County Board of Commissioners work session to order. At this time, we'll have the financial recap from January 2022 by our Finance Director, Alicia Cersey.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
At the end of January, we had revenues of $50 million, 121. We're at about 84%, 85% of our budgeted revenue. So property tax collections are coming in good and our other tax revenue is coming in good. That compares to about 84% in January of '21, so we're running right in line with where we were last year. This, we're about 58% of the way through the year and we've spent about 55 and 1/2% of our budget in expenditures. Now, we are getting to the point in the year where our expenditures are going to start exceeding our revenue, so our fund balance dropped about a half a million dollars last year, but that's common for this time of year. Cash is still good at $47 million, 732. We'll continue to watch that drop back as we move on through the next few months. We have several things that I just wanted to bring to your attention. Our sales tax is running about 9.34% over last year and there are some revenue lines where we've met our budget. We get that one-time insurance premium tax in the fall and we met our budget there. Our intangible taxes, real estate transfer taxes, building permits, collection commissions and contributions have all met the current year budget. So on those line items, you will see that anything going forward, we will actually be going over budget on those. We do have a few expense items that I'm a little concerned about and I think those are just related to supply chain and our current economic situation, but our gas and oil is running higher than budget. And we did budget to increase, but we didn't quite anticipate the increases that we've seen this past year. So our gas and oil lines are running above budget and some of our maintenance costs are running above budget because building materials and other auto parts and everything seems to be going up in cost. And then we've got office supply expense, the same thing. We've got cleaning materials and paper, actually printer paper's hard to come by right now. There's a lot of things that we use day-to-day that aren't easy to, it's easy to come by used to. We could just call and get it the next day. Now it's a week, two weeks out. From the Finance Department standpoint, we're starting to work on the 2023 budgets. I've met with all of the departments and had our initial meetings and hope to have those coming in at probably on Monday and then I'll start building the expense budgets from there.
Any questions for Alicia?
I don't have a question, but I do want to comment and say commend our department heads and my fellow Commissioners and Chair and all for a conservative budget and that our revenues do seem to be doing well, but throw in a precaution there. I know at home, as you mentioned, everything that I touch has gone up in price and is going up more. I wanted to get PVC pipe the other day and it's, oh, we can't get any and when it comes in, it's going to be 30% higher because the rosin prices are up. And I mean, it's just everything. We know what gas prices are doing. So I, and what I anticipate that our expenses are going to go up and that next year's budget just for operating, our various departments are going to be higher. And so just because we have a good cash balance and so on now, doesn't mean we can spend freely. So I'm just, yes, being kind of hawkish out there, I guess, and saying, thanks for being conservative, but let's stay that way because, yeah, we don't know where these prices are going to go.
Yeah, I agree. And I think our department heads see that too.
Yeah.
So they're working hard to do what they can to.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank Joe Biden.
Okay, we'll move on to the review and discussion of items for the March 1st, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioners, at this time, I would like to add an item, 8.3. This is a consideration of the expenditure, I'm sorry, I don't have the dollar amount, but we'll hear from that in just a moment, for two Rockwell variable flexible drives and rental for a chiller until the Rockwell VFD are installed. And this is projected to be at eight weeks that we'll receive the equipment for the courthouse and the historic courthouse because the air conditioning has broken. But we'll hear more from that from our Finance Director. So at this point, we'll go to 8.1, pathway renovations using an ARPA grant agreement. It's a consideration of ARPA subrecipient grant agreement with Pathway Center Community Board, Doing Businesses Pathway Center, for the behavior and developmental group, developmental growth, a grant up to $225,000 for Pathways to renovate the facility located at 153 Independence Drive, Carrollton, Georgia, in order to respond to our public health emergency and the negative impact on the COVID pandemic and to authorize a chairman to execute the agreement and take other actions to implement the terms of the agreement. We have Jay Benefield here. He's the CEO of Pathways. And of course, Stacy Blackman is here as the County Attorney to present our agreement. And Jody Goodman is one of our appointees to the Pathways Board. She is also present.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you so much for the consideration today. I know a number of you had an opportunity at one point in the past to take a tour of our building and since you were there, some nice work has been done. Our parking lot has been resurfaced, so thank you very much for that. We have new signage. We have a new roof. So again, very good outside stuff. The concern now is obviously the inside of the building. It's over 20 years old and a lot of the things inside our building are very dated. We have some carpet waiting areas that are too small to prevent kind of appropriate social distancing for COVID. Painting of the walls, just the cleanliness of the facility and again, the waiting rooms and other places in the building certainly needs some care. And this opportunity we have here would certainly be a great thing for Pathways. I think it would be a great thing for Carroll County and the clients that we serve. We continue to serve more and more individuals every year. We did a recent look and due to COVID issues, we are up about 53% over the number of clients served over a year ago. And part of this grant would allow us to take some individual offices and convert them to larger spaces that would allow for groups to happen, which will allow us to serve more and more individuals as we go forward.
Thank you, Jay. Do y'all have any questions? I know several of us toured. It was probably what, last spring when we toured our facility. Any questions for Jade, anything relating to Pathways?
I just want to say, I know with, in the last couple of years, there certainly has been more mental health. I feel for your staff, but also for the people who need the services. Seems like drugs contribute to that largely, but there also are other things in the last couple of years that have exacerbated the mental health needs and I'm glad for Jody Goodman and her staff and what they do. I did a comprehensive mega performance audit on the state's community mental health program during Governor Perdue's term and totally revamped that program and I really appreciate those services. And I know you have looked into, just for our constituents' sake, what the state can do for funding and you're not expecting any free ride from the county. And again, just commend your staff and hope that we can provide all that we need for our citizens and their mental health.
Thank you. I really appreciate the support from this group for our folks. They're kind of the forgotten folks in your community sometimes and everywhere across the country, but they, if treated right, they can become, instead of a drain on the society, it can become a tax-paying, job-holding individuals that actually will contribute. And things like this will really help that. So thank you.
Stacy, do you have anything to, on the contract or anything?
No, this is a similar ARPA grant agreement that we've used for other projects. So it's up to 225,000 and they have reporting requirements. And the improvements will be considered part of the facility that we'll continue to own.
If there's no further questions or discussion, are you all okay with putting it on a consent agenda?
I've got one quick question.
Oh, sure.
And this is a financial question, I guess. I just want to be sure I understand this right. When we provide funds like this, we keep the funds and invoices are submitted against that, correct? Like we don't remit the entire funds upfront?
On this particular one, they're going to submit draw requests.
Okay.
As the renovations are completed, we'll inspect it. They're going to fund them upfront. Their, Pathways is willing to fund the invoice upfront and seek reimbursement for this project.
Okay.
Are y'all all good with putting it on consent?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Thank you. So Jade, we won't need you to come back Tuesday night. 8.2 is the mobile crisis unit, again, ARPA grant management. We had discussed this back at our fall retreat about partnering with the City of Carrollton with a grant up to $75,000 to purchase another vehicle for our crisis, mobile crisis unit. And I've got Jody here, if y'all have any more questions concerning mental health, but we also have an agreement very similar to what Stacy just presented with ARPA. So any questions for myself, Jody, or Stacy? Hearing and seeing none, are you all okay with putting this on a consent agenda? All right, thank you. Okay, and then earlier, as I said, 8.3, we're adding a consideration for some equipment to pay for air conditioning for this building and the courthouse. And I'm going to call on Alicia Cersey, our Finance Director, to present. And we do have Jesus Hernandez here also that does the maintenance for our buildings if you have any questions on the equipment.
What we have is a variable drive unit that runs the motor for the chiller units over at the courthouse. We have two separate motors and two separate drive units and both of those drive units have gone bad. Those are proprietary drivers that are built by Rockwell specifically for Carrier and to the specs for that Carrier unit. So we tried to look at some options of possibly getting some quotes other than Carrier, but the only way we can do this is through Carrier because it's proprietary equipment. So I talked to the serviceman at Merrill this morning to discuss our options and he explained to me that Merrill could do this work, but what they are paying for the price is going to be more than what we will pay Carrier for the parts and labor. And the Carrier technicians are specifically trained on how to install these units. Basically, this driver is a circuit board and we had a lightning storm the other night and the next morning these things were out. So what we're proposing, each driver is $34,304. So there's two of those for a total of $68,608. Then we did get quotes on the chiller rentals. So we're renting a chiller system. Carrier provided a quote and we went ahead and got them to come because they were the lowest bid. The unit is $8,500 a month and we anticipate that we're going to need that for two months. So that's $17,000. And they charged us $4,400 in freight and installation. We had a quote from Train for $17,150 for the rental and $12,500 to install it. And then we had a quote from United Rentals for $45,000 for two months of rental and $2,995 for the installation and freight. So we went ahead and got that Carrier unit in and got it installed. Jesus stayed late last night with the installers and got everything up and running on it and got the courthouse to start cooling down and hopefully it's been comfortable. But the total price for the drivers, the rental system and the installation of the rental system is $90,008. We've got budgeted for our repair and maintenance, building repair and maintenance is $145,000 for this year. And that budget is for this building, the Judicial Center, the Admin Center, DFAX, and I think Pathways too. Right now, we've spent about $96,000 of that. It looks like we're going to spend about $49,000 just on regular repairs and maintenance. That would put us at the end of the year. I'm sorry, we've got $49,000 left to spend. It looks like we're going to spend about $48,000 of that, so we've only got about $1,000 left out of that budget. So that's why we're coming back and asking for an additional $90,000 to go into that building repair and maintenance so we can get those units repaired.
Alicia, should we go ahead and add one more week just to make sure if there's, or do an up to a dollar amount to ensure that we're not back here asking for two extra weeks of rental just in case?
We can do up to $100,000. I think it's, if you go by the week, the price jumps pretty significantly to, I don't, well, maybe I do have the numbers here. Hang on just a minute.
Yeah, I think it was right.
It's $28,33 a week.
Yes.
So we'd probably need an extra $6,000 if we went two additional weeks.
I'm just thinking to be prepared so we're not back.
I'm okay with doing that if the Commissioners are okay with adding that. Doing it also, Carrier will give us a three-year warranty on this, which is what they put on the unit when it's new, when they install it brand-new. So we'll get a three-year warranty with this purchase through Carrier.
You can be thankful Jesus was here late last night. If we saw him here late last night, we would be sweating right this moment.
Mm-hmm. Help me understand just a little more about the Carrier situation. So I understand that it's Carrier equipment in the mainframe, if you will, so we have to do the ancillary with Carrier, I guess. So are we getting this directly from a Carrier supplier and not?
No, we're getting it directly from Carrier.
Okay.
The manufacturer.
Okay.
So we're skipping, so we could have gotten it through Merrill.
Right.
That's what, who is a Carrier supplier.
Yeah.
But Carrier charges them on the parts as much as they charge us on the parts and installation. So even Merrill said, you've got to go straight to the manufacturer.
Okay, okay. And so the reason it went out was lightning or, I mean, I'm just trying to understand why all of a sudden?
We haven't identified exactly why it went out, but there was a lightning storm the night before, the next morning it was out. So the.
But it's also past its life. I mean, they say guarantee, what, seven years?
Seven years.
And we've had 10 years on it.
Good.
So it's not like just a strike of lightning is going to take this one out too necessarily. It's just we've really gotten our use out of this piece of equipment.
Yeah. Do we have some maintenance contract with, at the house? For example, we're under a maintenance contract. I mean, I'm sure 90% of the people are. And so twice a year, they come and they'll tell us, oops, this looks bad, you need a new condenser, probably next year because it's starting to leak or whatever. Do we have that type of thing? So we can, what I'm getting at is can we be?
They come in and do routine maintenance and that unit is actually required. And if you go over there and look at it, they've got a date written on there, the last time they did the maintenance on it. So they come in and do preventative maintenance on it, yes.
Uh-huh.
But I don't know, I mean, this is a circuit control board.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that.
Electronics.
You can anticipate, yes, electronics. So I'm not sure if you can anticipate when you're going to have a failure.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Good with it being on consent agenda? Okay, great. Thank you, Alicia. Okay, we're now going to move into the business session. 9.1 is a film location agreement and we have Ben Skipper, our Carroll County Parks Director, and Stacy Blackman, County Attorney, to present this item.
Okay, this is a proposed film location agreement at Moore's Bridge Park for a film and we're, this agreement, we give the rights to the license for their filming is in the agreement. And there are some work that's being done by Public Works that the film company is willing to pay for, so they're willing to improve the property. And I think Ben Skipper's willing, knows more about those improvements that luckily the film company's paying for that will improve our property.
As Commissioner Reynolds knows, he's had several requests, I think along with Steve Fuller, request to paint the house and Chairman Morgan had instructed me to paint the house and as luck would have it, four days later, film crew calls us. And the film crew loved the house as is with the rustic look. So the film crew is going to film the movie in, I think, a reverse sequence and film the rustic look first and through their graceful donations, they're going to pay the county to paint the house. We fixed the road to the house. We're going to be having to provide a parking lot, which will all stay with Carroll County Parks Department. So, and the film crew is paying for all of that. So that was a huge savings to the Parks budget. And it's just luck would have it, it was perfect timing. The house was, it was at that point in time that it needed to be repainted and just, you know, the same week that the chairman had instructed me to go down and start painting, we had started and mobilized and they showed up, so they made it all easy for us. Any questions or additions?
Explain if you can how, and I'm glad, you know, we're getting this revenue and have this in-road. I think it is a fortunate thing. There is a bigger picture that I would like to just touch on, but how will this dovetail with other things that are ongoing, especially with the Moore's Bridge property like the Sorba bike routes and TPL and its green and blue trails down from Atlanta and that kind of thing? Will it, in other words, it won't be one or the other. It will dovetail and we can use that park for both.
Absolutely. And to explain in the more detail what Commissioner Reynolds is referring to, the park is currently 500 acres and there's a huge swamp, wetland, just dead center of it at about 250. And one side of the park is open, 250 acres, and the other side of the park has remained closed where the current residence is that we're talking about. Due to the county, you know, not having enough to open, put in two entrances and opening more at portion of it. So yes, all of this will stay with Carroll County Parks and we'll be able to be leveraged into additional opportunities for this side of the park going forward. One of the opportunities that we in the park system would envision is, this is not the first movie that has been filmed there. This will actually be the second movie. The first movie was filmed in the 90s. The name of it was Conjure. John Snyder was probably one of the bigger actors of the name at that time that was in that movie. This will be the second one. To my knowledge, it will be filmed there, but what we're setting the park up is kind of to a film-ready friendly scenario. Because the one thing that the scouts, as they would call them, is the crews that go out and look for properties that they really enjoyed about this property is, one, its uniqueness. Two, is its quaintness. You didn't hear the traffic. You didn't hear noises. You didn't hear general public that they struggled with in other portions of Georgia trying to drown out the background noise and other things going on. So that's what they really liked about this site. So, but all of the things, the improvements that they will be providing will stay with us and we hope that we can register that. There's a film site registered with the Georgia Department of Film Industry. We're available to fry the new pictures, the parking, the water, the power, all of those things that this crew is currently bringing to us that we currently do not have.
And it brings some good improvements to it as far as the roads and the house improvements?
Absolutely.
I'm glad for that. The bigger picture, if I can just touch on it, is bringing more tourism to that Huykesburg area. We have Banning. I think there's a good bit more that we can do with the Moore's Bridge area and now in particular, I've talked with other district commissioners and private folks and so on, especially now with Macintosh with, and I've been silent on this publicly, but just mentioned it, that the adjacent property to Macintosh is a wonderful, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I'd like to, you know, see what we can do with that in an effort to bring more tourism to the area. And so we might hear more of that in the future. The state is interested as well as some other parties and I want to do what we can to support that interest and possibly act on that. And we'd be remiss, I think, if we sat by and neglected that opportunity. So bringing more tourism, including the movie industry, is a great thing and I'm glad for step one.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ben, I read through this and I understand they're going to put a new roof on the house?
Yes.
Period windows, a new front porch, steps?
Excellent. It'll be the rear porch.
Rear porch.
The rear porch was, it being as old as it is, it was just timed out.
Well, that's fine.
Father time had gotten to it. So yes, they're putting in a new rear porch, new steps. The roof on it is currently a metal building, a metal tin roof, so that they will be doing things to that to bring it back to a period. There are windows in the house that were not period correct. They were modern windows.
Right.
And the movie set crew is building new windows to go back into the house that will be period correct.
Okay, and I saw they're going to, they're going to set a pole, so I guess they're running electricity into the house? I mean, is the house, is that house wired?
No, the house has electricity and the house has an alarm system on it.
Okay.
So the county.
That part confused me, yeah.
The county in partnership with Historical Society, this is where we can plug them, the Historical Society pays for the alarm system in partnership in saving the old house. But the electrical system's going to be much closer to the entrance where we will be building an acre or plus or minus parking pad that will be for the RVs, bathrooms, utilities, makeup, dressing, stage crew, cast, all of those heavy items that will not be in the film area. So that will be much closer to the front entrance and that's where we will be providing power and water. Water will be coming from the City of Huykesburg and then we will set a power pole out there for them to, you know, obviously they'll want air conditioning in the makeup trailer, so.
Any further questions or discussion? You good with putting this on a consent agenda? Okay, great. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
At 9.2, the magistrate wall project, I'm going to call on Danny Yates from Public Works to talk a little bit about this project. We've put a brand-new roof on out there, but we still have a few issues with the building.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Yeah, on February the 3rd, if I'm not mistaken, that was a Thursday night, we had very heavy rainfall, very severe rainfall that night. And the next morning, we had water in the magistrate building and as you all know, we had just put a new roof on. And we got some contractors to come out, look at it, assess the situation, and they found the problem is actually a wall that, y'all all know the magistrate building, you've got a roof here and a roof here and the wall that goes up between them is, water is getting in behind it. So they're looking at taking several courses of the brick off.
courses of the brick off, re-flashing, installing a new brick, caulking everything, good. And we got two prices, one from West Georgia Resources for $18,800, and one for Engineered Restorations, $21,500. And I recommend we use West Georgia Resources for $18,800.
Who put it on in the first place, I guess?
The wall.
The new roofing job?
The new roof, and that was West Georgia, if I'm not mistaken, correct? I think so.
Is there not some warranty or coverage?
Well, this isn't part of the roof, Mr. Reynolds. It's actually on the brick wall. Water is getting in through the brick.
Okay.
All the mortar joints in the brick, I'm assuming, is where the issue is.
Okay. Separate from what they did?
Separate from the roof, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions for Danny? Well, seeing and hearing none, are y'all good putting this on consent agenda? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Danny. And we now have Will Simmons, our district court administrator with the 6th Judicial Administrative District, to present a Coweta Judicial Circuit Salary Supplement ordinance.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Again, my name is Will Simmons, and I'm the district court administrator, and I know that sounds like a lot. So, while you have the request in front of you, let me tell you how I got here. Georgia has 159 counties and 49 judicial circuits. I am responsible, from a state perspective, for the 6th Judicial District, which is comprised of 14 counties, about 24 active Superior Court judges, 10 senior judges, and five judicial circuits, Coweta Circuit being one of them, which comprise you all as well. And so, I'm here to talk a little bit about the judge's supplement, which was last increased, I believe, in 2008. We are in the top seven largest circuits in the state. The average supplement for the top six is about $60,244, and ours is at $30,000, has been for quite some time. The average for the entire 49 circuits is $36,108. And so, we're still $6,000 below the average for the state. Every circuit in the state receives a supplement. Every Superior Court judge receives a supplement. So, when you compare us to circuits of like sizes, such as Spalding County, Chattahoochee Circuit, Augusta, Eastern, we are significantly, they're significantly higher than ours. Let me tell you what we've been doing to help this county. Through the leadership of our chief judge, John Simpson, we've secured a separate set of ARPA funds. Our governor, Kemp, secured judicial council funds of about $200 million. So, that's about $2 million per circuit. Under his leadership, we've received 1.8 million of that. And what we've done with that so far was to hire an additional clerk for our jury. We've hired an additional assistant district attorney, a deputy sheriff. We purchased some technology and also some personnel for technology. The other thing we've done to help is that any computer needs or technology needs that our judges need, they don't have to come to you all. They pretty much come through my office, and I pay for that through state funds. So, that's been a 15-year journey with that. And so, that's just some information. I know you have a resolution in front of you. We've been to all four of the other counties, so you all are our last stop. And on behalf of our Superior Court judges who work so hard and just kept their head down and never asked for anything, I'm asking you to please consider the approval of maxing out their supplement at $50,000, which is capped statutorily by the state. So, if this happens, they won't be before you again. And what many circuits have done prior to this law being enacted some five or six years ago, knowing that it was coming up, they went on ahead and did everything they needed to do to make sure their circuits and their judges were well taken care of. And so, we will not go beyond what the law says. And so, again, that's our request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions?
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So, right now, we're around 30, did you say? And the average is 36?
Yes, sir.
If we do this, we'll be at 50. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. But, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And again, just so for your math mind, you split that with four other counties.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If there's no further questions, are you good with putting this on a consent agenda?
Indeed.
Okay, so, as much as we love having you visit Carroll County, you do not have to come back on Tuesday night. Thank you, Will.
Thank you for your time.
9.4 is an RFQ for an architect for the administration building. I'm going to call on the county attorney, Stacy Blackman.
This is a long-awaited event. I know for everyone, you've all worked very hard to make this happen. So, finally, ready to issue an RFP for the design services for the county admin facility. And this is, in your pack of RFPs, for the facility to house in one location, the essential departments for one or more buildings in one location. And we have a proposed process similar to the RFPs that we did for the insurance proposals and that we'll be bringing back to you. So, once we have the selection committee appointed by the chairman, we'll be, have the assistance of Theron Day to help facilitate the selection process interviewing. And then, the finalists will come back to you for the work session, and then, hopefully, the final proposal, the selection, will be at the May Board of Commissioners meeting. So, we think we'll have a lot of good prospects for the architect.
Any questions for myself or for Stacy? Well, seeing and hearing none, are y'all good to put this on a consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. All right, 9.5 is an RFQ for an architect on the Villarica Fire Station. I would like to post, not postpone this, I would like to wait till Tuesday to have discussion and a vote, since this is Commissioner Chance's district, and he lost his grandmother yesterday. So, and our thoughts and prayers are with him. But I would like to just wait, if that's okay with y'all, to have discussion and a vote. Great. So, let me just review what we have for Tuesday night on my notes here. So, on a consent agenda, we have 8.1, the Pathways renovation. 8.2 is the mobile crisis unit. 8.3 is the Rockwell VFD drives and the rental for the air conditioning unit. 9.1 is the film location agreement. 9.2 is the magistrate wall project. 9.3 is the Coweta Judicial Circuit Salary Supplement. And 9.4 is the architect for the administration building. All that will be on a consent agenda, and then, we'll just have a presentation and comments and discussion on the RFQ for the architect on Villarica Fire Station. Did I miss anything? We all good? Great. If there's no further questions or discussion, I'll adjourn our work session. Thank you very much.